And there will be no physical location that's open to the public. The public can observe the meeting while sheltering at home via the Zoom link as the primary means of participation, or via the cable channel 26 or live stream broadcast as alternative, alternative methods of viewing the meeting. Participation via the Zoom link will enable the meeting to be observed live and will enable the public to speak during the public comment periods. The Zoom link was published in the meeting agenda. Live public comments are being accepted at this meeting in place of email public comments. Public comments may be provided live by members of the public utilizing the Zoom link to participate in the meeting. Utilize the raise hand function in the Zoom application on a computer, smartphone, or tablet, or else enter star number if you're dialing in by phone. Please ensure your name is correctly entered in your Zoom profile to see so that city staff may properly identify you when it's your turn to speak. Those dialing in by phone will be called to speak by the last four digits of their phone number as shown in the Zoom interface. We're going to start with a roll call vote and before that I'm going to note that we are really happy to have our newest planning commissioner Alex Ferguson with us present tonight. Perhaps after roll call maybe he'll say a couple of words, but first I'll ask for roll call.
Thank you Chair. Commissioner Berman.
Present.
Commissioner Big Stick. Commissioner Ferguson.
Present.
Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Commissioner Hauser.
Present.
Commissioner Leo.
Present.
Commissioner Nibbland.
Present. Maybe Commissioner Ferguson, if you want to say just a couple of words, this is a chance to do it.
Yeah, hi all. My name is Alex Ferguson. I'm pretty new to this. Had my orientation four or five hours ago, so happy to be here, happy to meet everyone. Looking forward to everything, not up to speed on anything yet, so my apologies in advance for my ignorance. I'll leave it back to you.
Thanks much and welcome. Commissioner Big Stick, could you lead us in the salute to the flag?
Certainly, my pleasure. Yeah, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And while I have the mic, welcome Alex.
Thank you Commissioner Big Stick. So that'll take us then to our first item of administrative business, which is the approval of the order of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda? Commissioner Big Stick.
We approve the order of agenda.
Commissioner Big Stick has moved that we approve the order of agenda. Is there a second? Commissioner Godwin.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a second to the motion to approve the order of agenda. Can we get a roll call vote please? Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mr. Murdock, I think we'll need a roll call vote on the approval of the order of agenda, please.
It's frozen, Chair.
Yes.
Oh, it's frozen. Um.
Oh, I'll let him know that he's frozen.
Thank you. Ms. Gannon, can you do a roll call vote while we're waiting?
Hello, I don't think you're on mute.
Yeah, sorry about that. I was messaging Christian. Commissioner Big Stick.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser. Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Leo.
Yes.
Commissioner Nibbland.
Yes, thank you for pitch hitting on that. We have no minutes that we need to approve tonight. The next item that we've got to deal with under administrative business is designation of a liaison to the city council meeting. And this is the meeting of October 12th, 2020, and it pertains to the 1300 Danman mixed use appeal in the 1307 Redwood WCF appeal. Do we have a commissioner who'd be willing to volunteer to serve as the liaison to the city council meeting of October 12?
Chair, before we move on, I do need to announce that since publication of this agenda packet, we've learned that both of those items will be continued, and so we no longer need a planning commission liaison.
Thank you for interjecting there. That's will be for some future meeting, I'm sure. That will move us to oral communications, and this is the portion of the agenda that's available to the public to address the planning commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdictions in the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. Is there anybody who's interested in addressing the commission under oral communications?
I do not have any hands raised, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. We'll go ahead then and move past oral communications, and I'll note that there were no consent items, so we're going to first deal with the continued public. This is file number 20002001, site development permit PSD 71402, use permit UP 90402, tentative subdivision SUB 20402, authorization for heritage tree removal and authorization for logging operations. And this pertains to construction of four Newtown house duplex buildings and associated subdivision for condominium purposes on an approximately 53,000 square foot undeveloped lot located on the east side of Monterey Road, about 250 feet southeast of the Monterey Road and Hickey Boulevard intersection in Pacifica. The project would involve or include the removal of six heritage trees and 51 non-heritage trees. The recommended sequel action is actually NA for this evening, and the recommended action of staff is to continue the item to the planning commission meeting of October 19, 2020. Could get a staff report on this item, please.
Thank you Chair. Good evening Commissioners, Senior Planner Christian Murdock. Similar to the last continuance requested by staff at the last planning commission meeting, the city staff did receive additional public comments which required further evaluation by the city, and the time required to evaluate those comments did not enable us to complete our review and publish our report in time for this meeting. And so we're respectfully requesting a continuance as indicated in the agenda to October 19th, with the hope that we will be able to conclude our analysis of the current comments we've received to allow a public hearing to continue on that item.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Are there any questions from Commissioners to staff regarding the, this item and the recommended action? Commissioner Berman.
I'm wondering if, given that this item has been continued for a couple months now, is there any concern with the timeline and either shot clock or statute of limitations?
I'm not concerned at this point, Vice Chair Berman. We are evaluating the comments in part to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act, and so we do need to continue our analysis and ensure that process is complete before we have any applicable permit streamlining act or other project processing timeline concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Commissioner Berman for that question. Commissioner Hauser.
My, my question is very similar to Commissioner Berman's. Um, you know, I, I really appreciate the amount of analysis that staff is doing, and I think it's necessary. I also recall that I pushed very hard to continue the item when this was originally going before us with the, in the vein that we have some sort of date certain that we continue this for. And I just want to ask, out of respect for, you know, understanding development contracts and the way things work and options, are we also okay to our knowledge on a time standpoint as far as the developer's contract? We're not timing him out in any way, are we?
Well, I don't have any information on that point. At this stage, the applicant has not indicated a specific timeline that would affect this project from their perspective. And even if there was such a timeline, it's the city's obligation to fully comply with its obligations under the California Environmental Quality Act and to perform a proper analysis of the project to comply with the municipal code. And so I think that's our imperative from the city's perspective, while where possible, taking into account applicant timelines, for example.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Hauser. I'll ask at this point whether or not there's any public comment regarding this item.
I do not see any hands raised, Chair.
Thank you. We'll go ahead, excuse me, and bring it back then to the commission for discussion and perhaps a motion. Is there any comment or, or a motion for that matter from the Commissioners? Commissioner Godwin.
Yeah, I just wanted to remark that some of the neighbors of the, this project wanted to meet with one or all of us, and I'd agreed to meet with them, and they had later decided they didn't want a meeting. So I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that it was scheduled for Friday.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm aware. I guess in that vein, I'd note that I'm aware that some of the neighbors and people who are concerned about the project have reached out to various Commissioners. And of course, we've got Brown Act concerns insofar as you're going to meet in groups to get large enough. So that's something we'd want to bear in mind. I mean, I have some experience with respect to some county projects. I just know where it was appropriate, where we've actually done special meetings onsite. I'm not suggesting that's necessarily appropriate here, but insofar as you deal with, you know, a majority of the commission, you know, it's something we really want to consider before we got together. I mean, folks decide for themselves if they want to meet one off with folks, but I guess I, I don't know if I've received an email asking to meet or not, but.
But right. What I offered was a meeting with myself only.
Yeah.
So we had some clarification issues, I think.
Right. I defer to city staff. If there was a request for a larger scale meeting.
Yes, yes, there was some request, but I needed to ensure that what was going on.
And Ms. Bazana.
Chair Nibbland, I would just confirm what you said, that there are Brown Act concerns with regard to a meeting of a majority of the planning commissioners. So we need to be cognizant of that. Also, Brown Act requirements relating to serial meetings, we want to make sure to avoid those. And typically, with these development applications, a developer and/or the community will reach out to planning commissioners. It's always up to the individual planning commissioner whether or not he wants to, he or she wants to meet with the applicant or community as it may be. But any ex parte communications will need to be disclosed, you know, as is the practice of the planning commission at the, you know, at the time where the application is considered.
As always, thank you for that counsel. Definitely bear that in mind. Commissioner Berman.
Another question for Ms. Bazana in regards to a meeting that involves either all of the planning commissioners or a public meeting that is open to all the public and Commissioners can attend. Like, what are the limits on that? And then also, in addition to that, if an individual planning commissioner were to meet with a party, and then that party meets with every other planning commissioner, is that a violation of the Brown Act in, I think it's called the hub and spoke method?
Right, so there, I, I don't know that this is the right time to get into a conversation about Brown Act generally, since the only thing that is before the planning commission tonight is the consideration of the continuance. But generally speaking, there are two ways that a serial meeting can occur, and one is the hub and spoke way. And so that's why, you know, it's always important for planning commissioners to be cognizant of anyone who relays information about discussions with other planning commissioners.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bazana. All, I guess all that said, is there, is there a motion to, to continue this item? Commissioner Hauser.
Yes, I'll make the motion to continue this item to the meeting of October 19th.
Great, so we have a motion from Commissioner Hauser to continue this item to the meeting of October 19th. Is there a second to that motion? Commissioner Godwin.
I second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to continue this item to October 19th, 2020. Can we get a roll call vote on that motion?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Yes.
Chair Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser. Commissioner Hauser.
Can you hear me? I'm saying yes, sorry.
I heard you that time, thank you. Commissioner Leo.
Yes.
Commissioner Nibbland.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So moving then from the continued public hearing to the new public hearing, this is file number 20200, amendment to marijuana use permit MUP 4-18 to allow adult-use cannabis sales within an existing 642 square foot cannabis retail operation approved in 2018 for medicinal cannabis sales only at 2770 Palmetto Avenue, APN 016294570. The recommended sequel action is a Class 1 categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15301 of the Sequel Guidelines, and the recommended action from staff is that we approve this item as conditioned.
Chair Nibbland.
Chair Nibbland.
Before we get started, I believe there is a commissioner who has an announcement.
Okay, thank you. It looks like maybe Commissioner Leo has an announcement.
Yes, thank you. I'll recuse myself from this item due to a, my ownership in real property in the vicinity of this, the location that we're going to be discussing tonight. So per guidance from the city attorney, I will be going on mute and turn off my camera.
Thank you Commissioner Leo. Okay, well, so with that recusal, then I'll go ahead and ask that staff provide us a staff report.
Evening Commissioners, I'm Assistant Planner Helen Gannon, Police Chief Dan Stidl, and the applicant Jesus are also present this evening to participate in this agenda item if there are any questions. The item before you is the amendment of marijuana use permit MUP-4-18. The existing permit allows for medicinal cannabis sales only. The applicant would like to allow adult-use cannabis sales within the existing cannabis retail operation. Excuse me. In October of 2018, the city council approved MUP-4-18 with City Council Resolution Number 482018. Condition of approval number six explains that any amendment to the operations plan, which would include adult-use cannabis sales, shall be considered an amendment to the MUP and would require a public hearing back to the planning commission. There will be no change to the site plan or floor plan. As explained further in the staff report, the existing cannabis business already has a security plan, which would continue to ensure safe operation of the facility. The business has been in operation since December of 2018, and neither the city's code enforcement division nor the city's police department have received any complaints or calls for service regarding complaints about the business. The proposed amendment would allow Fog Center to operate as a combined medicinal and adult-use cannabis retail operations, and all other aspects of the operations plan would remain the same, including the store hours. There are currently two other approved cannabis retail operations in the Sharp Park overlay district. Lit located at 2110 Palmetto is currently operating as a combined medicinal and adult-use cannabis retail operation, and CB-1 Cove Side located at 1726 Palmetto is approved as a combined cannabis retail operation as well, but has not yet started operation. It is working through construction under its building permit. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a dash attached resolution to find the subject cannabis retail operation in full compliance with the city's cannabis regulations and the conditions of approval imposed on the operation. Thank you, and I'm Bill, for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Gannon. Do any of the Commissioners have any clarifying questions or, or whatnot for the, for staff at this time? Commissioner Big Stick.
Thank you Chair. I only have one question for the chief, and the question is, chief, have there been any calls for service at either dispensaries that have been up and running on Palmetto? So we've had a couple call service, service at one of the dispensaries, but there was nothing, and I'm looking, there was nothing that distinguished it from the type of call service could have happened in any business, nothing related to the actual cannabis or anything like that. There, nothing that would lead there to immediately there's any law enforcement concerns regarding any of the businesses on Palmetto at this point. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you Commissioner Big Stick. Any other questions? I'm seeing none. I actually have a quick question from Ms. Gannon, and it may require some speculation, so perhaps it's not the kind of question that can be answered. But is there any sense that moving from purely medicinal to adult recreational may have any impact with respect to traffic, foot traffic, vehicle traffic, any impacts that might be appreciable or material that we ought to consider in this context?
Yeah, um, again, like you said, purely speculation. What I would speculate or probably, you know, an educated guess is that they would receive a little bit more foot traffic since, you know, you don't need to have a medical card for that. But something to keep in mind is that they do already have five off-street parking spaces on sites in the back, and so those would still be available, and there isn't any change to their, you know, proposed square footage or anything. So those parking spaces should still suffice for the amount of square footage that they have at the, on site.
Yeah, I think also to that point, Chair Nibbland, Senior Planner Christian Murdock, as Ms. Gannon mentioned, the overall capacity of the shop to serve customers will not increase under this application. And so even though the product assortment will change from medicinal only to adult use and medicinal cannabis, the ability to service more people or to intensify the use is not present under the circumstances either. And so the outer bounds of this use, as was evaluated under the original marijuana use permit, are not changing from staff's perspective.
Thank you both. Commissioner Berman.
Does that also include the number of employees that will be working there?
The, the number of employees that are working there will not be changing. So no aspect of the operations plan, other than the type of product that will be sold there, will be changing. But Jesus, the applicant, is also here to speak to any, any of those questions if needed.
Okay, I might have one or two additional questions for the applicant.
Well, that's, that's actually a really good segue then. We'll go ahead then and invite the applicant to address this matter. And after the applicant has had, I guess, up to 10 minutes to address the matter, we'll go ahead and open the matter up to a general public comment. But we'll start with the applicant. Sir, I'm going to tell you that you're really faint. You maybe need to move a little closer to the microphone or something.
Let me change my settings here.
Sure.
Is that any better?
It's a little better. It, it just, I guess, just do what we can to, I guess, keep our voices up, and please proceed.
Okay. I'll start over. Good evening Commissioners, city staff, and Pacifica residents. Thank you for taking the time to meet today. I hope you're all having a safe and healthy year. My name is Jesus Segun, and I am the CEO of the Fog Center LLC. Our mission for the almost past two years continues to be education and provide safe access to high-quality organic cannabis. In order to provide the best possible service to our patients, our bartenders are well-trained with knowledge of all medicinal cannabis products we carry and what they are used for. They take the time with each patient to assure all of the patients' needs have been met and make sure all questions have been answered. Safety is always one of our top priorities. Patients are verified to be of legal age with the proper documentation before they can enter the retail area where they sit down with a bartender or use our express pickup desk. Due to COVID-19, we are currently allowing only three patients in the store at a time to allow for social distancing. Our bartenders are wearing masks, gloves, and disinfecting the retail area after each patient, as well as at the beginning and end of the day. Our location is secured with an ADT security alarm system and security cameras inside and outside with live on-stream and 90-day backup hard drives, which can be provided to the Pacifica Police Department within 24 hours. There are also always two bartenders onsite during operation. Before leaving the store, all patients will have their medication safely secured inside a plain, white, smell-proof and childproof exit bag for extra safety as well as discretion. Aside from our product on display for patients to review, all products are stored safely in our storage room where only myself or the manager onsite have keys to. We are always easily available to answer questions and concerns patients may have and can be reached through several platforms, including email, Instagram, postal mail, via direct call as well. We operate seven days a week excluding major holidays from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We chose these hours in order to respect our neighbors from early as well as late-night traffic. There is no onsite consumption allowed. Our bartenders are all members of this community who dress respectfully in a shirt and tie when on delivery or working in a store. These past almost two years have been trying, to say the least. An abundance of regulatory changes, program implementations from the Bureau of Cannabis Control, and 30% taxes on cannabis has created challenges for new small business and members of the community trying to obtain legal medicinal cannabis. There are currently more illegal cannabis retailers on the peninsula than legal, and this can be confusing for a lot of the residents. Despite the challenges, it has been a true pleasure serving the community, and I could not be prouder of my staff and the trust they have built with our patients. We continue to see the relief our patients get from finding the right medication for them, and we will continue this approach. It is a great feeling when someone comes back and you can see the joy in their face from being pain-free. We have witnessed patients get relief from several ailments from stress, anxiety, cancer, chronic pain, depression, arthritis recovery from addiction, as well as Parkinson's. Unfortunately, not all these cases have a happy ending, and we do help quite a few terminally ill patients who otherwise would not be able to live comfortably and enjoy their lives. It can be quite hard at times for us, as well as for the patients, but it's for these patients that we continue to strive for educating the public on medicinal cannabis and the medicinal rights. With progress comes change, and for us to survive in the ever-changing cannabis market, adult use is a necessity. This will however not change our mission. We will always continue to provide the same customer service and education we are known and loved for. We are here to continue our fight for our patients, and we appreciate the opportunity to present our spotless record for our almost first two years and hope to continue to be a shining example of what good cannabis business can be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I actually know from comments of a couple moments ago that we have at least one Commissioner may have a couple of questions for you. So going to go ahead and ask Commissioners if they have any particular questions for the applicant at this time to take the opportunity to ask them. Commissioner Berman.
Thank you. With the changes in products that you intend to now sell, are there going to be different delivery methods or times? Is anything going to change with delivery?
So nothing with delivery will change. The products as well won't change very much. There may just be a few more products added on in terms of just having a little bit more variety. But the only main difference in terms of adult use and medicinal use is the amount that a medicinal patient can purchase. So overall, the products are still available to both platforms.
Okay, just being naive, what's, what's the difference, like, how much more can one person versus another purchase?
So an adult-use patient can purchase up to one ounce of cannabis, whereas a medicinal patient can purchase up to eight ounces of cannabis.
Got it. Okay. And then I guess same question that I asked staff. And can you just confirm that with the, the change, that there isn't going to be an increase in demand to where it needs, you'll need more employees?
No, it shouldn't be. Right now, we currently have up to eight employees that we're going to have on staff, and that should be more than plenty for us to take care of all the patients that, that we need to take care of.
And then just knowing from the staff report that it looks like you have five existing parking stalls. On a given day, are those, I guess, outside of the pandemic, are those parking stalls sufficient for your operations?
Yes, there's usually at least two empty in the back.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Any other questions at this point for the applicant? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and ask staff if there are any public comments on this item.
There are no hands raised currently, Chair Nibblin.
Thank you. Okay, we'll just go ahead then and bring it on back to the Commission for discussion. I'll ask Commissioners whether there's a discussion on this item. Or alternatively, I'll ask if anybody cares to make a motion with respect to this item. Commissioner Big Stick.
Thank you, Chair. I will move the planning commission finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approves the amendment to marijuana use permit, MUP-4-18. By adopting the resolution included as attachment A to the staff report included conditions of approval and exhibit A to the resolution, and incorporates all maps, the applicant's MUP application, and all attachments and testimony into the record by reference.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick, for that motion. Is there a second to Commissioner Big Stick's motion? Commissioner Berman.
I second the motion.
So we have a motion and we have a second. Can we go ahead and get a roll call vote on this item?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Nibblin.
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously with one recusal.
Thank you. I'm just going to note for the record that anyone who's aggrieved by the action of the planning commission has 10 calendar days to take the decision in writing to the City Council. If any of the above actions are challenged in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Judicial review of any city administrative decision may be had only if a petition is filed with the court and awaited within the 90th day following the date upon which decision becomes final. Judicial review of environmental determinations may be subject to a shorter time period for litigation. In certain cases, 30 days following the date of final decision. Okay, so that will then take us to communications, and we first will have Commission Communications. Are there any? Ms. Bazana.
Chair, may I suggest that we invite Commissioner Leo back to the meeting?
Of course. Is there somebody who can contact Commissioner Leo? There you are. Welcome back. So Commission Communications, then. Is there any Commission Communications? Commissioner Big Stick.
Thank you, Chair. I have two Commissioner Communications tonight. Try saying that five times fast. So my regular shtick, please wear a mask. Somebody working with the public all day, every day, we appreciate it. It shows respect to us on the one hand, and on the other hand, I have a suspicion it keeps us a heck of a lot healthier when those masks are worn, so please wear them. Keep us all healthy, and thank you for that. My other communication, I was the liaison to the September 29th City Council meeting. And from that, I have two things to bring up. Because I was liaising for the Sharp Park specific plan, and I served my duty, hopefully adequately for the Commission. But it was pretty late in the evening by the time we got there. And so the City Council didn't make any decisions on direction that night. So presumably, I may have another opportunity to liaison on that point, or anybody else, if you want to fight me for it. I'm happy to bow out. But so earlier on in the evening, our former Commissioners Rich Campbell and and Tom Clifford were both honored in special proclamations by the mayor. And so that was heartening to see our comrades honored this way. And that took about an hour. There were a few special presentations. And then the other thing that they were discussing at great length was the Marymount Apartments, the Marymount Gateway Apartments that we have discussed, I think it was last year. And it was brought to City Council because they've decided to turn it into an affordable housing housing site across the board. So that's 170 units that the City Council has agreed to put into motion as affordable housing. So we went from a place where we were kind of in this awkward space of rent-controlling it if you squint to now it's going to be affordable housing across the board. And it was a nice reason from my perspective to have a slight delay in our discussion on the Sharp Park specific plan. So it was an eventful evening for me to be a liaison to.
Well, thanks for doing that. I know that was a forced march into the late evening, so. Chair Berman.
Kind of bringing it back to my questions regarding the Brown Act. I don't know if now's an appropriate time to discuss it briefly, given the influx of emails and outreach to the Commission. One item I didn't want to comment on is reminding the Commission that I believe it is a violation of the Brown Act to reply all on an email if too many Commissioners are a part of that email. But correct me if I'm wrong, staff.
Well, it is possible for a reply-all incident to result in a Brown Act violation. That's why it's preferable to avoid it. You know, if it's a single Commissioner sharing information, it may not be as concerning, but multiple Commissioners dialoguing in response to multiple reply-alls certainly gets into uncomfortable territory, and we hope to avoid that. So you'll notice particularly for the benefit of our new Commissioner, when staff sends out communications to the Commission, we do put all of the Commissioners on BCC blind carbon copy so that it's not possible to reply all to the Commissioners to avoid that circumstance. But please be particularly cautious when receiving emails from the public, who may not exercise the same caution or be aware of the issue at hand, who may include all of you on the two-line or a mix of two and CCs, that you could inadvertently reply all and constitute a Brown Act violation at some point.
And I guess just to dovetail on that, not the substance of it, but just process-wise. I know that, you know, Brown Act training and sort of the, I can't remember, is it 1234, the training that, I know it happens occasionally. I'm trying to remember the last time I either administered it or received it. But it's maybe something we ought to think about. And at a bare minimum, you know, an occasional refresher on some of these things is probably not a bad, it's probably not a bad thing. I know we've got busy agendas and whatnot, but I just offer that to staff as food for thought.
Yes, Chair Nibblin, I would add that periodically the clerk will send out notices for training on AB 1234. But in terms of if planning commissioners have questions regarding the Brown Act, please feel free to contact staff or our office.
We do have some materials which we can share with the Commission after tonight's meeting to read up on some of these issues. We typically offer them as part of a new Commissioner orientation, but we're happy to share them. They're informative and helpful nonetheless, even if you've been on the Commission for a while. So I'm happy to send those out.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other Commission Communications. I'll ask if there are staff communications.
Thank you, Chair. I think Commissioner Big Stick touched on the key points I wanted to touch on. Commending again Commissioners Clifford and Campbell for their many years of service. Council recognized them accordingly. It was nice to see that. The City Council did take up discussion of the Sharp Park specific plan guiding policy framework. As the Council got into that discussion, it was clear they needed some additional information, which staff had not provided. And so we are going back to work to gather that information to help the Council have a fruitful discussion the next time we take it on an upcoming City Council agenda. Due to the information they requested, we did not identify a specific date for that. We hope in perhaps the next four to six weeks to see if there's an available and appropriate council meeting date.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Having completed staff communications, that'll take us to adjournments, and of course, we'll need a motion to adjourn. Is there someone who'd like to make that motion? I'm going to go ahead and move that we adjourn. Is there a second? Commissioner Big Stick. Great. We have a motion in a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Leo.
Yes.
Commissioner Nibblin.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thanks. Well, good night, everybody.
Good night.